November fifteenth, yes, fifteen?
Yeah.
Meeting, regular meeting?
No, there's a taxation hearing.
Oh, thank you.
The hearing, yes.
All right, I'm calling to order the public hearing, Truth in Taxation 2023 Niles Main District Library at eight oh two P M.
Seven oh two.
Yes, this says eight oh two, pardon me.
Yeah.
Oh, it got never changed.
Never got changed.
Yeah.
We haven't been away.
That's so long.
Yep, I can look on my phone.
I'll tell you the time.
I can look on my phone. Thank you.
Exactly. This one's a not. I changed the other one, but I didn't change this one.
That's all right.
Harper? Oh, sorry, ready? Yes. My apologies. Trustee Kedier?
Present.
Trustee Durblick?
Present.
Trustee Schoenfeld?
Present.
Treasurer Vitello?
Present.
Secretary Rosansky?
Here.
Vice President Trunkel?
Here.
President Keen?
Here. Stand for the flag of the nations.
The flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to discuss the proposed 2023 levy request for the Niles Main District Library and for open public comment, please?
Can I make a motion to discuss?
Well.
No, you should be, should be public comment.
Public comments first, isn't it?
Yeah.
You're supposed to present your reasoning for the truth in taxation. The amount. So we are having a truth in taxation hearing tonight because the levy that we voted on is five percent over the highest amount we've worked from the last three years. And so we are holding this hearing to give the public a chance to give their opinion on the levy amount. Thank you. So now we are open for public comment. So you can go ahead and call.
Well, I have a question because since it does say motion, so do we have a first and a second?
If you first and second, then you go right into vote. You don't do public comments. You actually have to do public comment. It should have been written with public comments before.
Yeah, it was not put in there correctly.
Okay, got it. Okay, so we're doing public comments first?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Elliot Osherman?
Good evening, this is Elliot Osherman. I understand that public comments are allowed twice this evening, once at each part of the public meeting. Today I will forego my usual nine declarative statements and my comments about directing those comments to the entirety of the board and by providing copies in advance to the board. I start with a quote from F. Scott Fitzgerald, that "The test of a first-rate intelligence is the ability to hold two opposed ideas in mind at the same time and still retain the ability to function," unquote. For many months in the last three fiscal years, the board had been deadlocked in a three to three vote during the budget-making process, the budget adoption, the levy-making process, and the levy adoption. A certain group of three, whom I will not name, with luck they'll recognize themselves, did everything in their power to delay the budget adoption, did everything in their power to reduce the current budget, insisted that an increased levy would not pass, insisted that a level levy would not pass, and threatened not to pass any levy unless their intended decrease of eighteen percent was approved. Since April, we've had an election, and now we're down to two members who don't pass that test. I still won't mention those women's names, but the current board now has a five to two majority that has done a wonderful job of proposing a budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, which suggests for and attempts to solve most of the resulting problems from the last two budgets and the last two levies. In my opinion, the resulting budget and the now resulting levy proposal do a good job of resolving the problems that arose as a result of the last two budgets and the last two levies. I urge passage as proposed. Thank you and good night.
David Kerbota?
Good evening, board members and the residents of Niles, Maine, and happy Thanksgiving. Looking all this over, we'd say when we're studying law, we say putting it in a nutshell. To operate our local library for twelve months under this proposed levy, our homes and our businesses are going to be slapped for seven million, eight hundred thousand dollars of a levy to operate this library that I'm standing with for twelve months with a budget of seven million, six hundred thousand dollars for that period. This is an increase of about one million, five hundred thousand dollars plus over that which we were utilizing just two years ago. That, that means we, Niles Main Township, just, we just can't do it. We cannot operate a library anymore for any less than one million, three hundred thousand dollars every sixty days. Sorry, we just can't do it, or at least our current library board that is representing us and that we voted in either by voting for the member or members or by staying home and not voting, letting whatever hits the fan hit the fan, but we caused it. So today, as we leave this meeting, should this board get its levy as presented here just after the new year begins, 2024, we will have gone sixty days, or should I say, gone away with one million, three hundred thousand dollars. Are you being overcharged for services provided by our library? Absolutely. But what are you going to do about it? It means increased taxes, which will also again reduce money in circulation in the Niles Main economy and again can't be used in our economy. It means increases in rent for those in our township residing in apartments as those landlords need to come up with money to pay for all this. It means increased financial burdens on homeowners and business owners, but you see, they just can't or they just won't do better bringing down the spending. Don't worry, however, because the library, as it then unionizes, those library costs will go up to an easily predictable ten million dollar annual budget and levy within the next twenty-four months. Will it stop? No. And it will go on and on with all those pensions and benefits as, as about at the moment, just the salaries and benefits of this proposed levy alone, just that part of that seven point eight million dollars is four point three million dollars. And just think of all those additional pensions and benefits that we'll be paying forever and ever, that is, for those who remain residents of Main Township, let alone Illinois. Why won't it stop? Because you as the residents of Niles, Maine will not stop it. Why won't it stop? Because this board that was voted in won't stop it. But hey, there is good news. Last year, the library actually only spent about five point three million. So this levy the board presents will give it so much more money to spend and spend and creatively spend. And there's no need for the library to put any of this levy sought, seven point eight million dollars, in the savings.
Time's up.
Because the savings accounts of this, of this library
Thank you.
currently total thirteen million, three hundred and thirty million dollars
Thank you.
and zero cents. This budget makes zero sense. Levy makes zero sense. And I want to thank those two board members previously referenced by the previous speaker. Thank you.
Jerry Stapanski?
Hi, I'm Jerry Stapanski, long-term resident of Niles. I'll give you a very brief background myself. I was in the Air Force in Intelligence for four years in England, and a cost accountant, a zero-based budget, corporate budget analyst. Worked for an I T consulting firm and worked my way up through all kinds of programming and operations over the years, thirty-five years, to director of I T. And I think this levy this year should be cut by five percent or ten percent. And I'll give you one quick example. It's got to do with the twenty-four computers as you go down the steps. I figured out the hours on that based on library scheduling. The public has eighty-two thousand hours available to them. Every time you go down those steps, there's two or three people on the computer. That system of twenty-four computers should have in its future selling off seventeen of those computers through auction. All you need are six or seven computers. This is what's happening on the spending. We all of the conservative nature like the library. It's the spending that nobody looks at, okay? The second thing, I'd like to congratulate a board member, a trustee who won the Illinois Association of Trustees, trustee of the year. And then, when you're done celebrating, go back a year or two to the meeting when this person got up in the middle of a meeting, disrupted the meeting, took a gavel from the chairman of that meeting, walked around waving it with another trustee. These people were supported by the mayor of Niles. This is what's happening to libraries in Illinois, especially this one. It's really a lot of ball. And as far as your rainy day fund, I've talked and dealt with budgeting in the past for many years. A rainy day fund, a contingency fund should be no more than between ten to twenty percent. Guys, ladies, I like libraries. Use a sane budget. As Dave explained, your costs are going up because of the union, but look at lines one by one, not on last year's number, on what you need. And no one in Niles knows what the job descriptions are in any of these behind-the-scenes people at the library. If anyone in this library behind the scenes has two monitors on their desk, one is for business and the other one is probably, and I'm guessing pretty good.
Fine, thank you.
One last sentence, is probably used for solitaire or poker. Be honest with the people.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Steve Sanders? Steve Sanders?
Good evening, my name is Steve Sanders. I just wanted to come out and I support this levy and I think it is good for us to fund the library appropriately. The last two years, we have had drastic cuts to the library and we have not funded the library properly, and we are running at a deficit this year because of it. And I think we need to increase the funding back to where it was beforehand so that we are able to provide programs to the residents that are needed. After this, I'm going downstairs to rent a button maker. It's something small, but it's something that this library provides to the village. There's a Polish Heritage Month, or festival that they put on recently. There is a craft swap, there is a plant swap, they've demonstrated GoPros. This is what our money is going towards, and this is why we need to fund our library appropriately. We have a union contract now, and I'm glad that we've gotten that. We need to pay our staff appropriately so that we hire good people who have experience in what they're doing. And so tonight, I just want to say that I hope you approve the levy for the full amount that you are requesting, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's everyone?
I have one email comment. This comment was submitted by Joe McCula. The tax levy is the price the board, the library board has decided to charge the taxpayers to operate the library for one year. Niles Main Library has a budget of seven point eight million and is proposing a tax levy of seven point six million this budget year. Last year, the library spent five point three million and levied five million. This substantial increase doesn't make logically or financially sense. Let's look at released September library statistics, an average month. September twenty twenty-three, original borrowings of books, magazines, and audiovisual totaled twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four plus five hundred and eighteen e-books, equalling twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-two annually. That is annually, that is three hundred and twenty-three thousand. This number reflects a more than fifty percent decline in the last decade. This is not the fault of library staff or library board, but the societal and technological changes out of everybody's control. Most print material is available on phones, computers, and iPads. Library DVDs and millions of content options are available at low cost and convenient streaming or cable. Spending more money will not bring back the library of the past. The proposed twenty-three, twenty-four budget is seven point six million. If we use that amount to calculate the cost to taxpayers of each borrowed item, we come up with a cost of twenty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents per item borrowed, substantially higher than the cost of most of these items. The levy is one hundred and thirty-one dollars for each of the fifty-eight thousand district residents, seventy-five percent of whom don't have library cards. Only two thousand, six hundred and twenty-six unique library cards were used to check out material in September of twenty twenty-three. The Niles Main Library Board needs to cut operating costs to match the level of borrowing. The board needs to recognize reality and reassess staffing and obsolete, obsolete operating processes and procedures and concentrate, concentrate on their core mission. The seven point six million dollar levy is excessive considering the library general funds are currently seven point three million dollars after trustees recently needlessly transferred two million from general to capital reserve fund for a total of five point five million in that fund. As of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, the library had a total of thirteen million, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars in various funds that hasn't received either of the two property tax installments due this budget year. After three months into the budget year, expenses are six hundred and nine thousand dollars under budget, another reason the levy is excessive. The board seriously needs to reconsider this and substantially reduce their levy and wasteful spending and also operate the library with business efficiency. The library currently has excess funds on hand and increasing the levy from five million to seven point six million is an unnecessary burden to the taxpayers of this district whose property taxes already are the highest in the nation. Joe McCula, Niles taxpayer.
Is there anyone else present that would like to give a comment?
I'd like to respond to one part of that statement from Mr. McCula. Mr. McCula is treasurer of this board, and for him to continue to say that we did not have to move that two million dollars over is inaccurate. We had to by the law. We've checked with our attorneys, we've checked with our accountants, we had to by Illinois law move that two million dollars over whether we wanted to or not. It was either rebate it or put it in. Hold on, Ms. Campbell, hold on, I'll give you a minute.
Sorry, sorry.
We could have, we could have, we could have absolutely.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We could have absolutely.
Don't use that word rebate on her.
Oh, we could have absolutely rebated it. However, we would only be sitting at this table asking for more money to fix a roof that was neglected for years, and we needed to pay for that roof as well.
That's five and a half million in your account.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't we have to vote on something?
Oh, well.
Or whatever. Do you want to do an motion?
I have a comment to say.
She has something to say? It's public comment.
Yeah.
But yes, if you need to say something, go ahead.
Suzanne, I agree.
Are you, is your comment?
The space for our comment would be in the second meeting when we discuss it.
Okay, that's all right.
That's what I, I think. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the. Yes.
People think to verify.
Yeah.
Well, hey, how the agenda is written, I would be, there we have a motion to approve, but if we're going to discuss anything, since it doesn't say discuss, we would have to discuss it now.
So, hold on, you mean the regular agenda? So, hold on. You mean the regular agenda?
Yeah, so on page two, we have a motion to discuss here, or we have a motion to approve there. So there would be a discussion there.
Oh, okay.
So you would have to discuss now.
Okay, fair.
All right, so let's just make sure that the public is done. All right, so that it is time for the board to make comments.
So you can speak because it's an agenda item?
Okay. Do we need a first and a second though? Because it does say motion.
I'd like to make a motion to discuss the proposed 2023 levy request for the Niles, Maine District Library.
Check it.
Thank you.
We need a vote.
They need, we're not voting now?
We're not.
Of course, we did this and it's open for discussion.
Okay, we don't need a vote to discuss.
Yes.
There is no vote.
Got it.
Correct. Twelve minutes meeting. Correct. And no discussion. What's that? Speak now or for a holding piece? Absolutely.
Can I say something now? We as a board must stop the runaway spending. The tax levy is just for one year, and November twentieth, twenty-one, trustees set a five point eight eight million levy and the union negotiations as well. Nothing happened to our library and we're still standing. With the economy, the fuel costs, and recovering from COVID. Hold on a moment, I'm sorry. The proposed seven point five million tax levy is a significant hike. We need to reevaluate staffing, need to hear from Matrix Consulting Group to conclude the results. We need to accurately do studies and show patron ratios. The library currently has excess funds on hand and will not increase the patrons using our services or programs. With a decline in library usage, we need to better evaluate the situation. This is not but our agenda. It's about the community. The tax in Niles is the highest in the area, and we were hired and actually running for the committee of being represented for the community. This is not about our agenda. It's what Niles has to offer to subsidize this large amount. We owe it to the residents, the community, and what's right for them. We are elected officials that are voted by the entire community to do the right thing. And I think we should lower it.
Are any other trustees wanting to give a comment?
I'd like to make a quick comment. You know, when we voted, we discussed this, what was it now, two weeks ago roughly? We mentioned the fact that the library is a very small percentage of the overall taxes in this area. I just received my own tax bill. You know, the library was a couple hundred dollars. Get another tax bill next year and it might be a hundred bucks more. Based on the calculation, it'll be, I believe, ninety-nine dollars more. Ninety-nine dollars more in a year for an average working person is a trip to Dunkin' Donuts with a coffee and a couple of donuts once a month. For a retired person, it may be different. However, there are freezes and exemptions that are in place that will protect retired community members from bearing the brunt of what is amounting to, you know, in terms of the average taxpayer, a very small increase. And so I believe, again, wholeheartedly, that this increase is going to allow the library to stay in the black, and so therefore I'm still in support of it. Thank you.
I just have a couple things. The library is in the black with thirteen million dollars in cash and investments. The fact that your budget is higher than last year doesn't put us in the red. We just need to use the cash investments we have to pay the additional expenses that were approved by the budget. Secondly, there are many people who live in Niles, I work with them constantly, who are struggling to meet their mortgages, who are on fixed incomes or decreased incomes, who can't support their families, and maybe this increase is not a large amount to some people, but to others, they can barely make their real estate payments now. And the truth of the matter is, we should be looking at this levy as an amount of money that we need to take from the residents, whether it's nine hundred dollars or ninety-nine dollars. We do not need the money. We can't justify it, and we shouldn't be expecting the taxpayers to pay it. That's the way I look at it.
Can I respond to the comments?
Go right ahead.
I believe you're conflating the idea of a debt with a deficit. A budget deficit is measured year over year. A debt looks at your overall income and your overall earnings. If we were to run a deficit in any given year, then we are going to tax the money in our savings. I know you accept that, but again, that's a difference in philosophy between yourself and myself as to how things should be run. I understand we have a disagreement. It's a legitimate disagreement, but it is what it is. It's not that I'm looking at it wrong or you're looking at it right or you're looking at it wrong and I'm looking at it right. We're simply looking at it differently.
Okay.
So that's point number one. Point number two is regarding increase versus, you know, ninety-nine dollars versus nine or ninety dollars or whatever the case may be. I believe that is very significant because, you know, when the vast majority of taxes go to institutions that are not this institution, then the institutions, if we are looking to cut taxes somewhere, then we really need to take it up with those institutions. For example, if, you know, you don't want to see particular streets repaired, do you think that money is not well spent? Then complain to the village about that. It's not, you know, it's not, that's not a complaint to be brought to the library. Again, we can debate, you know, we can debate statistics left and right.
I'm debating.
You know, but at the end of the day, I think we're in agreement based on the numbers we saw last meeting that the increase will be approximately a hundred bucks over a place.
Can I clarify your understanding of the budget? Okay.
Sure.
The budget, the proposed budget is seven point, I've heard so many numbers this evening and they don't sound correct, but I believe the budget is seven point six. Remember, the appropriation is almost thirteen million. So with an appropriation, you're not going to be in the red because you're automatically allowed to be able to utilize that money, which would mean taking it from a different fund, which is the money that's already in the library. So your suggestion that we should compare a deficit with a debt doesn't really mesh with the conversation about a budget. So that's one. We have money to pay the union or whatever additional expenses we'll end up having this year because the library is well-funded. As far as taking ninety dollars or nine hundred dollars from the taxpayers when we don't need the money, that's the difference. I'm not concerned about who doesn't prepare roads and who's not fixing sidewalks. I'm saying, as a library trustee, we do not need to increase the levy. We don't, there's no need for us to take the money from the taxpayers. That's the only reason we shouldn't be doing it. Thank you. So that's how I look at it.
Let's redirect to the point.
Can I just respond to the whole time?
If it's about the levy?
Yeah.
Okay, because that's what we should be focused on.
So, you know, my just response, very much in brief to that comment, is that, you know, I disagree that we don't need the money. I believe we do need the money. So, again.
And that is an opinion that some of us have and some of us don't, so yes.
And that's fair.
And typically appropriations are still coming from the taxpayers. And it's, never mind, that's all I'm saying.
Did you have anything else you wanted to say, trustee Rosansky?
I'm not going to say it now because seriously, I think it'll fall on deaf ears.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment real quick. Twelve months ago, I started my, well, some of us started the campaign for the library to bring the library back, but not only bring it back, make it better. I was just talking to somebody today. 1972, my wife's grandmother moved here. My mother-in-law was in Maine East. My wife went through this. Now my children are going through this library. I want to make sure that this library has everything it needs moving forward for my grandchildren to come here and be part of it. But I also want to make sure that we all, that at least from my perspective, what this does. Yes, we have money behind us. Yes, there's legalities of some of that money we can't touch and things of that nature. But we're also giving our staff a living wage, not a one point four percent increase for two years. We're giving them a real living wage where they can afford to live and not have to have a second or a third job and that they can be home with their families as well. So for those reasons. Are you done? Can I finish? For those reasons, I want to make sure that we fund this library properly, and if this is what we vote on today is the proper way, and let's say we are incorrect. Let's say Mr. Carabota had valid points that we missed or that it was definitely not the right way. I am more than welcome to come back and revisit that next year and give you my word that if that's the case, I have no problem voting to keep it flat next year.
Trustee Patel?
No comments, thank you.
I just want to, something stood out to me from the comment from Mr. McCula, and that was that this levy isn't going to bring back the library of the past. And that's right, it's not. It's going to bring the library of the future because the library is an ever-changing thing. And the library of the past is dead, and we don't want the library of the past. We want a library that is going to represent the community. So that's why we need to have this levy.
Like to make a motion to adjourn the truth and taxation meeting?
A second.
Justice Kudir?
Yes.
Justice Durbley?
Yes.
Yes.
Justice Schumpert?
Yes.
Treasurer Botero?
Yes.
Treasurer Secretary Rosansky? Vice President Schumpert?
Yes.
Heskey?
Yes. Seven thirty-two.
Thank you.